I walked right past and he was like, "Hey, in her pants." And I get walking straight by him, like, "This is crazy."
I feel like you're doing it.
I know.
Taylor, Taylor, read the text yourself.
I know.
Is that what you meant to say?
I said, "No." She thought that's what I said.
This is a little bit annoying. Taylor, Taylor, if I were you, I would just call you. I would just call you.
I think.
No.
No.
We're preparing. It's so sick of you.
So after you did that, she'd have been like, "Oh, she decided to be back too."
Yeah, I'm gonna say, "Why didn't you like this for..."
I wasn't thinking, I just looked at the chat really quickly. I was like... We were together, we were like, "Oh, that's cool." I know, I saw she was like, "No."
I was just kind of waiting for like, someone new, like.
Maybe it's like, "Ducky, we can take your hand."
Just don't do it.
I'm sure I have, when I text you.
Do that again.
I just kept thinking, "If she's going there..."
Oh, I don't know.
She definitely speaks up.
No way, I told my dad.
I didn't know, I thought it was for someone.
Can you send a tweet?
I think you've done.
Yeah, it's sent.
Congratulations. Sorry I missed you.
Oh, that's all right.
That's good. Glad to have you all here. Excited?
Yeah.
You brought, you brought the stuff.
It's good.
All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Rachel?
Here.
Katie?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Jeff Bornum?
Here.
James?
Here.
Carrie?
Here.
Jeff Weaver. All right, uh, we're gonna start with pleasure allegiance and a moment of silence for the honor service personnel. Everybody else come in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Do we have any items to be added or changed to the agenda? We do not. Okay, we're gonna start with recognition of our girls softball team.
Okay, um, the girls know I am a terrible public speaker and really kind of a listener. So I wrote my thoughts down. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, it was with great, great honor that I can stand before you today and introduce myself, Coach Jones, Coach Shepherd, and the 2023, uh, champion Gaylord Varsity softball team. This group of coaches and kids accomplished what so many others set, set out to do, and I'm so grateful that I was able to go along on this ride with them. I would first like to thank Coach Jones for coming on board. He was the first person I called when I got the varsity position, and I'm very fortunate to have it on staff. His knowledge and tireless work ethic was instrumental in the program's success. He has been working with all these girls since they were in Little League. His ability to raise the bar, challenge and push the girls towards excellence, and hold them to their standard and goals has made a resounding impact on this team and program. I would also like to take this time to thank Coach Shepherd, and his guidance and motivation encouragement has paid dividends this year and will continue to do so for years to come. I truly could not have navigated, uh, through this season without their help. And again, I give thanks. And now I would like to talk about this amazing group of young ladies. In the past three years, the Gaylord Varsity softball team has amassed an outstanding 109-7 record with three straight conference and district titles, two regional titles, and a state championship. Individually, they are also highly decorated with many all-district, all-conference, all-region, and all-state honors. Along the way, we also broke the state record for home runs this season with 73, with seven games more than we could have played, so in 41 games we could play for you. Uh, Aubrey Jones has the new high school record for, uh, home runs this season with 19, and I'm sure somebody in here will probably try to break that this year. All of these things are a byproduct of their relentless hard work, effort, and energy. I want to thank them for the impact that they have made on me, on their teammates, coaches, family, and this community. I stand here humbled and grateful beyond measure. Thank you for letting me be a part of this. So without further ado, ladies and gentlemen of the board, the 2023 state champion softball. Oh, sorry, this is pretty bad.
Right now?
Yeah.
That's very nice. This is going in the office, so thank you very much.
And coaches.
We'll try to, we'll try to get over.
Do you have your robes? Do you have your robes? Guys, where are your coverings?
Congratulations. You ready? Got it, nice job, girls.
Yes, you all can leave if you want to. It's gonna be a short meeting. If you want to stay and learn about what your school board does, you're welcome to, but you also are welcome to leave. We'll give you a moment to split if you all want to.
Have a good night, enjoy the rest of summer, see you in two weeks. Three weeks.
All right, um, on, oh, public input. Do we have any public input, sir? Okay, Ian Murphy, um, Jeff always says this, we will have three minutes each to speak. Ian, um, Ian, you're turning down time now for later?
Yep. Thank you.
That's fine. Um, you'll have three minutes to speak, Ian, um, please keep your comments towards us at the board, not towards anybody in the audience or any staff. Rona? Rona?
Not until later.
Okay, sorry. And Jeff?
And you've written later.
Okay. That's the only three we have, so. All right, consent agenda. It is recommended that the board approve the consent agenda as presented. Board meeting, board minutes. From August 10th, special board meeting workshop minutes. The treasures report, um, general fund and athletic bills in the amount of $3,200,000. Cafeteria bills in the amount of $20,000. Sinking fund bills in the amount of $34,000. Personnel, we have a lot of new hires. Um, it's recommended that the board approve the hiring of the following individuals contingent upon successful criminal history check and unprofessional conduct checked as presented. GHS teacher Ronald Huffman. SME teacher, uh, special education teacher Marcia Francis. NOE secretary Samantha McDonald. Food service helper Steven Young. Food service helper Catherine Tallman and food service helper Amber Weiss. Educational assistants Kristen Pearl, Melinda Reynolds, Elizabeth McDonald, Taylor Faust, Jody Blake, Victoria Boyd, Brittany Rondo, Heather Gennarelli. I'm sorry, I know I messed your name up, sorry Heather. Her. Her, Hermione, Barb, Rachel Vu, Laura Schilbert, Emily Masalit. Varsity football assistant coach Max Salisbury and Ryan Klein. GMS football coach Ronald Huff and eighth grade volleyball coach Julia Nervous. Resignations. It's recommended that the board approve the resignations of the following individuals as presented. Special education teachers Tammy Seal. GHS math teacher Kelsey Hubbard. Educational assistants Alicia Delcancy, Misha Sawyer, Natalia Powell. And food service manager Angie Karanka. Bus driver Carol Vegan. Varsity assistant football coaches Lucas DeFord, Mike, Lucas DeForge, sorry, Mike Woolford and Logan Huff. Eighth grade volleyball coach Dawn Dising.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. So discussion? Any discussion? Harry?
I have just a quick question. Procedurally, at the lab, at the workshop, there was a, um, comment from Amy Correll regarding the agenda. Or, I'm sorry, the, um, what was it? Yeah, so do we, was that amended?
I have a phone, it has not been amended yet, but I have a phone call with her so she can listen to the tape.
Okay, so you're working on, working through that?
Yeah.
Yeah, because she didn't say anything about that. I thought, I felt like she probably forgot to say something about it or public it, but I thought she was gonna say something about that, but she didn't, so.
Any more discussion? Rachel?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jeff Bornum?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
All right, do we have these? I know we have a few somewhere. I see a few of the people I know.
We're at the high school.
All right. Chris?
New high school staff members, follow me.
It's my pleasure to introduce to you tonight two new hires. Uh, first is Jake Huffman. He comes to us with over 20 years in education as a teacher, as a principal, and as a superintendent. He retired from the role of superintendent and came back to the classroom. Most recently, he's been teaching math at McLaughlin City, and he's decided to come join us here, uh, not only to teach math, but also to coach middle school football. Welcome, we're happy to have you here. Next up is Jody Blake. Jody comes to us, uh, with a bachelor's degree. I'm gonna get them mixed up, I think, from Wayne State and a master's from Oakland. Did I get it right?
Yep, you got it right.
So she has a master's degree in early childhood. She has, uh, extensive teaching experience in Dearborn Public Schools. She moved north, uh, several years ago and was an IA at North Ohio for a time, uh, needed to move on for personal reasons, and then is coming back to us at Gaylord High School, uh, to fill the open media tech position at GHS. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome, Chris.
Welcome.
How's it going today? All right. We have, uh, two new hires in our instructional aids. Uh, we have, uh, hold on, let me not screw that up. All right, we got Brittany Rondo. She graduated, uh, just down the road at Joburg. Uh, she, uh, got some, she's been working at Alpine Eye Care for quite some time. She's moved from receptionist up to technician, um, and now she's gonna join us in helping students in our literacy, um, doing the LA and reading. And then our other hire is, uh, Victoria Boyd. Uh, she graduated from, is it, uh, Chatfield Senior High in Colorado, right? All right. She's been living in Gaylord for quite some time, and she's worked, uh, in the medical field for a little bit as a dialysis technician, um, but her previous work was, uh, secretary, uh, right down the road at St. Mary's. So she'll be joining us in the, in the same department, uh, supporting students in reading, so. Our two hires.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I'll bring the North Ohio people. We're very excited to welcome aboard all of these wonderful new individuals to North Ohio. We have, starting with Melinda Reynolds, who is, um, has an associate's in health information technology from Kirtland, and she's been doing some home health and, um, retail, and she is going to be a, a special education, um, instructional assistant. And then, who do we, we have, okay, Heather Gennarelli. Okay, all right. She is, um, she has her bachelor's in applied, um, health from, okay, I am gonna, Aseusa. Okay, Pacific University. Just moved here from Kansas. Um, she's had some administrative support positions, um, in a couple different areas, including schools. We are welcoming back Sam McDonald, who has previously worked at North Ohio and is back now as our school secretary. She's been, um, actually writing, um, and editing websites and content for different blogs and organizations, and she has a bachelor's in psychology from LSSU. And we also have Ami Madonna, who is a GHS grad, so welcome. We're always so glad when we get our graduates back. She has, um, quite a bit of experience in, um, insurance account management, and she's, she'll be working with our special education and our Title I students. And Taylor Faust, who is going to be working with some of our, um, younger students that, uh, in the special education department. Um, she has a bachelor's, a science degree in elementary education from LSSU and has, um, had some experience at tree tops and education as well. So, just a really great group of people. Welcome, we're so happy. All right, new and unfinished business. Oh, one more, one more. I'm sorry. Two more. Oh, she's happy, okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome these smiling faces to North Ohio. South Maple, we have Marcia Francis joining the team. She's a longtime employee of the Gaylord Community Schools, and she went to, oh, where is it? Grand Canyon University to get her degree in elementary education, and she will be joining us as our new special education teacher this year. Congratulations, Marcia. I'd also like to welcome Kristen Pearl. Kristen has a degree from CMU in sociology. She is a longtime member of the PTO and active member of the community, and she will be joining us to support us with Title I help. Um, Hermione Barber, a Gaylord grad. She is currently a certified behavioral health technician with Acorn Health. Not Oklahoma Health, I always say that. She has a lot of experience with students with disabilities, and she will be joining us to support our special education students. And last but not least, we have Rachel Vu, who graduated with, from the Graduation Alliance. She has a wealth of healthcare knowledge, and she will be joining us as a shared employee for North Ohio and South Maple as a healthcare aide. So welcome.
This is Amber Wheezy. 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 And she is a, also a Gaylord grad, and she has fabulous fitness, and she's coming to food service with us as our new, um, caterer.
Congratulations.
Anybody else? We're good? All right. Welcome, everybody. We're so glad to have you all here and to get started this year. Um, all right, new and unfinished business. Sinking fund resolution. It's recommended that the board approve the 2023 sinking fund resolution as presented. I'll make the motion to approve the sinking fund resolution. Any discussion? Rachel?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jeff Bornum?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Motion Carrie's six. And then, um, GHS handbook template. It's recommended that the board approve the GCS handbook template as presented. Is this time for discussion? We need to make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the handbook template.
One second.
Any discussion?
Um, I just, um, in, um, looking through the handbook, there's a lot of language in there about restorative justice, and, and, um, I had been at a board meeting prior to being on the board and asked about the restorative justice language and trying to get that removed a little bit. Um, I was told that it was mandated by the Michigan Board of Education, but in reading through this packet, it just says strongly encouraged. Um, I was just wondering if it's possible to change the language of it, to pull that out. Oh, to approve it? Or we have to vote for the motion?
I think that's a good question. If we don't, we can answer it right now. Okay. Is that something you can get back to everyone?
Yeah, write it down.
Perfect, okay. Any other discussion? Rachel?
No.
Katie?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jeff Bornum?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Carrie?
No.
Motion Carrie's four two. Okay, um, and then we have our public input. So, Ian Murphy?
Thank you. You give me, uh, a few moments, I'll hand out this for you. And we have a quick little civics lesson. Since we're talking about language, and we're talking about terms, we're talking about ambiguous language specifically. Sorry if I sit down. Recently, uh, my name's Ian Murphy. I am a resident, I'm a graduate of Gaylord High School. I'm also a business owner here in town. Recently, we filed a lawsuit against the Health Department of Northwest Michigan. And specifically what this pertains to is the legal authority that the local health director had to close my restaurant, but also to put masks on your students. So this lawsuit moving forward has several large implications for you as a board. I know that you are involved in the Let Them Breathe lawsuit, I am not party to that, but I knew, I know very well what's going on with that lawsuit. Now, there's something important that everybody needs to remember when we're talking about all this stuff, right? You know, civics class, we talk about the three branches of government. This is really what this lawsuit is about that's in front of you, and I implore every single one of you to read it. Of course, you don't have to, but it's very, very important because it has everything to do with the Let Them Breathe lawsuit that is in front of you. It has everything to do with that gentleman's authority to issue any sort of mandate or anything in the name of safety and welfare. So when we're talking about language specifically, the law that was used originally to close down businesses, restaurants, and everything was the 1945 Emergency Powers of the Governor Act. Now, the Supreme Court in October found that that was unconstitutional. The rear, the words reasonable and necessary were so broad that the governor could do whatever she wanted, as long as reasonable and necessary to control an epidemic. That was ruled unconstitutional by the Michigan Supreme Court in October. They directly turned to 2253, three days later in October. This single law that again simply states the health director may prohibit the gathering of people for any purpose and may establish procedures. Now, for me, that was closing my restaurant. For you folks and your students, it was masking and social distancing and all of those other things, right? This is now unconstitutional. Judge Hunter ruled so in, uh, January of 2021. A court of appeals also just ruled this unconstitutional. I'm sorry, sir. This is important.
I'm writing some notes, but go ahead.
Sure thing. So this is now unconstitutional. There is no legal authority for them to use this law, no longer. Published opinion, by the way. So now we turn to 2453. Everybody knows Lisa Peacock was the local health director that put the mask mandates into place. This is what we are now challenging. It's the exact same language as 2253, which is now unconstitutional. By court rule, this has to go back to Judge Hunter. Look at the back of your packets. Count five is the vesting clauses. This is just simply where it states we need to go back to separating the three branches of government. Thank you, guys, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Oh, Rona Alexander.
Hi, I'm sorry. First of all, um, I wanted to address, um, I guess it would be the secretary to the board and find out we, um, why is it when public comment is written that it seems that some people get bullet points and full sentences, and others of us, like myself and even Amy Correll, are single words separated by commas taken out of context? I think that the minutes and the public comment need to be recorded unbiased, and that's not what I'm seeing. I went back and looked through several times the minutes. Um, so Katie, as secretary, I challenge you to make sure that they're unbiased and that they are really saying what we intended. I know you're not gonna say everything, but when it's taken out of context, it's, it's wrong. Um, and the other thing is emails. I have been sending emails to the board, I have not been getting responses. I'm not sure if it's going to a designated box or it goes to all of you. But when I send an email and I address it to each board member and leave my phone number and my email address, I do expect a response, and I think the public does too. I have talked to several community members this week who told me that they don't get responses from their emails, and I would like to know where they're going. Are they being censored, or are they coming to each individual board member? And I believe that you owe the public that response.
Thank you, Ronnie. Jeff?
Thank you for allowing me to talk to you, Gaylord School Board. This is my first time. I just like to make a comment that, you know, uh, in all the leadership... in all the leadership and classes that I have taken, you know, I, everything always rises and falls on leadership, right? And whenever things go good, right, everybody's like, hey, alright, who is it that's in charge over there, good job, right? And then also when things aren't going so well, it's the same thing. Hey, who's in charge over there, you know, what's going on? But everything rises and falls on leadership. I just wanna take a few of the things that I know we have talked about before. It's the school, or the standardized school test scores, yeah, standardized test scores. You know, and I understand that maybe some of you probably weren't here for, for some of that, that was, because our standardized school scores are lower than what they should be. We often, we all know that, right? Right, I mean, right? And don't look me like, what? They really are, and, and we also have, it seems that we have more parents leaving, taking their kids out of the school. You know, I just, everything rises and falls on leadership, and it will always go back to you guys. And no matter what, I mean, if we're doing a great job, it's gonna go back to you guys. And when we're not, it's gonna go back to you guys, right? But I do like to say that I do know it's not an easy job, and my hat's off to you, to the ones that are doing a good job, right? And I know that there's a lot of work to be done in those areas that I mentioned, right? So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, looks like we just need one more.
Take a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. Rachel?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Jeff Bornow?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.